City of Lawrence, Common Council. August 3, 2020, the meeting is now called to order. Can everyone please stand for Pledge of Allegiance and Prayer? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for gathering us today. I pray that you direct our thoughts, actions, and choices today. I pray our choices reflect you and best improve our city. In your name, amen.
Amen. Okay, next on the agenda, quorum, we have a quorum. All council members are present and accounted for. Next, we have comments of council members and special recognitions or resolutions. Do we have any?
Madam President, I have a couple.
Okay.
Okay, I would like to thank the explorers for covering the Marion County Fair and responding to concerns of the people out there. And then the next one, one of my constituents from Watson Farms sent me a sign, and they're having people do rolling stops at stop signs, not actually a full stop, and they're having trouble still with speeders. And I told her that I would mention this at the council meeting. She said because Noblesville has on their stop signs now, stop, stop, rolling stop, fines $200. So I told her we have our own sign makeage, so.
Thank you.
I want to bring it to the council. And I told her we had a problem at the four-way stop on Post Road and Otis, right by the CVS.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Freeman. Any other counselors?
Yes, Madam President, I would like to acknowledge Shaun Denny, Counselor Shaun Denny, and the Lawrence Park Foundation for our last week, 1,000 food giveaway in our Lawrence City. It was very successful, even though it was a rainy day. We had tons of volunteers, and we had several of the counselors there and our Lawrence City personnel, so it was a very productive day to give back to the city. So I want to thank him and his team for that.
Thank you, Counselor Woodfield. Any other counselors?
Yes, Madam President, sort of in the same vein, I got a message from Derek Morris, who's the Vice President of Lawrence Community Parks Foundation, and he just wanted to pass along his own personal thanks as well to the council and administration for their support in this food drive. The event was called Bellies Full for Back to School, and it was held at Lawrence Community Park. The Mayor Collier, thank you for helping to get the word out, and Counselors Lisa Chavis, Deb Whitfield, myself, and Maria Rusamorov, as well as Lawrence Police Chief Dave Hoffman joined us out there. We did give away 1,000 food boxes, and each food box represented four meals, so that was 4,000 meals we were given away in a period of two hours. So thank you to everybody that helped to make that possible. And I don't want to leave off Eric Martin, who helped to arrange the site, so thank you to him.
Thank you.
One last shout-out, too, to the Lawrence Township CERT team, who volunteered to direct traffic and helped to keep us coordinated there that day.
Thank you, Counselor Denny. Any other counselors? Okay, seen none. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes of regular meetings, July 6 and July 15, 2020. Is there a motion?
I make the motion.
Motion, Counselor Freeman.
Second.
Second, Counselor Denny. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Denny?
Yes.
Counselor Russell?
Yes.
Counselor Chevlot?
Yes.
Not if your audio's not working. Counselor Rusamorov?
Yes, I'm here. I'm sorry, we're having some difficulties.
That's okay, that's okay. Counselor Chavis? Yes.
Did you do Wells?
Counselor Wells?
I'm not sure.
Counselor Wells? He is muted, I believe.
He must have his on mute.
And now he's gone.
Gone.
So it's unanimous based on who's actively online at this point in time. He is not on. Either way, motion carries. Next on the agenda is signing of vouchers, approval of minutes, and authorization of payment. Is there a motion?
I make the motion.
Motion, Counselor Freeman, second, Counselor Russell. Is that correct, Counselor Russell?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. In one moment, Counselor Wells's audio is connecting, so let me give him a moment and see if he gets connected. I want to give him an opportunity, if he has any questions, before we cast that vote. Just take a brief recess, please. I'm going to see if I can get any telephonically. Okay, I have you on speakerphone, so because we can't see or hear you, I'm going to keep you on my cellphone on speakerphone so that you can actively participate in the meeting, okay?
Yeah, I was on the thing, but I mean, I've seen you guys and everything, but I couldn't get it to unmute.
That's okay. So we are now at, we're at signing of vouchers, approval of claims, and authorization of payment, and we have a motion and a second motion, Counselor Freeman, second, Counselor Russell. And so now we're at the point of, is there any discussion? So far, no counselors have any questions. I wanted to extend you the opportunity, if you had any discussion regarding that.
No, but I did have a comment that I would like to make to the administration, but I was unable because I couldn't get my phone to unmute.
Okay, so let's, okay, so I will circle back to you. We'll go ahead and cast the vote on this, and then I'll circle back. So there's no discussion. Roll call vote. Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Counselor Russell?
Yes.
Counselor Chevlot? Counselor Rusamorov?
Yes.
Counselor Denny?
Yes.
Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Wells?
Yes.
Counselor Chavis? Yes. Motion carries, unanimous? Let me, let me circle back to Counselor Wells on special recognitions or comments.
Thank you, Counselor, Madam President. What I wanted to bring to the attention to the administration, about two hours ago, I got a call from the neighbors over at Mitchner and 49th, Mitchner and 48th Street, that were severely under water. I mean, down before we had, and as I'm sure everyone realizes that the extensive repairs were made to the storm sewers in that area, I think it was last summer, and back in the spring, we had a heavy rain. I went over in that area, met with the neighbors. We had the street department come out, and they said that there were some filters that were on the new storm sewers that they had removed, and we had another rain not long after that, and I was told there were still some filters that had yet to be removed, but we still are having a continuation of flooding over there, and hopefully, everybody in the administration can understand the frustration of the citizens in that area, because water is pretty high, and it's also getting into people's basements because it backs up, it was about halfway up into the yards when I went over there a couple hours ago and took some video of it. So if the administration could go over there and, you know, take a look at it and see if there's still more of those filters that need to be removed, or what exactly is the problem, I know the neighbors would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Wells.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is reports of committee. There are none. Now, I have asked Controller Fenwick to just give us a quick update on upcoming dates for 2020 budget, okay? So I'm going to ask him to come forward on that, as well as to give us an update on energy savings.
Good evening. Couple of things, I just wanted to give a quick update on a couple of revenue items that I've mentioned as it pertains to the 2020 budget and where things are through June 30 of this year. The street department, which is, consists of two funds, the MVH Fund and the LRS Fund, both which are predominantly funded from the gas tax. For the MVH Fund, year-to-date, it's down about 170,000 year-over-year. Obviously, the months of its lagging, so the months of primarily April, May, June, and July are where that impact hit. For the LRS Fund, similarly, it's down about 120,000 year-to-date from last year. At that current rate, my best guess at this point is collectively, those two funds could be down about a half a million for the year, just given the slowdown in driving and the impact of that on the gas tax revenue. The only glimmer of hope is the collection in July, which is probably from May, even though it was down from the previous, last year's month, it was actually less down in June, so hopefully, that's a glimmer of hope. Another fund is the EMS Fund. Year-over-year, those revenues are down about 130,000, and based on that rate, my estimate for the year is about $200,000 hit to the EMS Fund. And then the last fund I'd like to give an update on is the General Fund. Thankfully, the income tax is a collection that's two years in arrears, so for this year, we're getting 2018 income tax collections, which means next year, we should get 2019, which ought to be better than 18, so the real hit would be in 2022. The only real negative right now in the General Fund were on the property tax collections. We're down probably about a half a million relative to where we would have been but for the extension of the payment deadline into July, so there were no penalties if you didn't pay until July, so it was expected that we would have some that wouldn't pay until then, which we've not received yet. So I think for the property taxes in the General Fund, the jury's still out because we, you know, could, we will still receive those, we just won't get them until likely December, so we won't know the full impact on property taxes until then, although the best guess is it's probably not going to be as down as much as it is, it's simply a timing standpoint right now. But even with that, in the General Fund, we still have a very healthy operating reserve, and right now, I would still forecast that at a bare minimum, we'll end the year flat in our reserve relative to where it was at the start of the year, which I'll remind you was at 7.4 million, which was about 3 million more than our target of 20%. So that's an update on kind of a couple of focal points in terms of revenue issues. So moving on to the, unless there are any questions, moving on to the 2021 budget calendar.
Jason?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I do have a question. So of the funds combined, the motor vehicle, EMS, notwithstanding the General Fund, you're forecasting almost about a million-dollar revenue miss in '20, calendar?
Correct.
Okay.
Amongst those funds, yes.
Yeah, amongst those funds. And so, and you mentioned the emergency fund, does that mean that even though the budget that we passed showed that we would be funding that emergency fund to some degree, is your expectations, is that that has stopped until we can kind of level set?
You know, the, in particular, for the EMS Fund, the wild card we have right now is, I think, a lot of the anticipated reimbursements from the COVID-19 expenses will have occurred out of that fund. So it's very likely that the revenue loss, even though the reimbursements aren't a revenue replacement, the amount of the revenue loss could be offset by what I think we could get in expenditure reimbursements, because we've actually had quite a bit, whether it be overtime, and we've actually purchased contactless devices, so a variety of those things. So we've identified in excess of what our revenue loss would be in the expenses we've incurred out of that fund, so it's possible it could still be kind of a net neutral situation.
So I'm going to ask Controller Fenwick just a real quick question. Have we received any federal funding in terms of reimbursements or whatever as a result of COVID?
Controller Fenwick, she's asking just a part B to her question. If not, what is the timeline you would anticipate?
So we have received, initially, we received about six weeks ago from the CARES Act, 35,000, which was for ambulance providers, and we were eligible on that particular program to actually submit for up to, actually, that was based on revenue loss, so we were able to submit for up to that $200,000 worth of revenue loss, which we did, and then in round two, we received about $1,100. So they didn't quite get us there, so that one, I call it, we received a marginal amount. Well, then Indianapolis received about 165 million from the CARES Act. There were two distributions, one for Indianapolis, and then the second was for all the other political subdivisions within Indianapolis. Based on population, we estimated our percentage of the total amount would have, could have been in the roughly 6 to 7 million range. We were allocated in the round two that Indianapolis received about a little over 700,000, and that's an expense reimbursement, so we have to submit just, or documents for the expenses we incurred. We received that about a month ago. The deadline, or the timeframe, is expenses incurred, I believe, from mid-March through the end of September, so we're still gathering our documentation there, and it's our expectation, we're going to try to submit for up to that roughly 700,000 number, so we'll begin that probably next week in a Phase 1 on our end, which will include a lot of the previously just discussed EMS expenditures that we've incurred and on the fire side, so we're cautiously optimistic that we could receive our fair share of that amount.
So you're saying, Controller Fenwick, that we receive less than 1% of the total amount reimbursed to Indianapolis?
Unfortunately, as well, under the CARES Act, cities, I believe, with a population, it was either 500,000 or 1 million, received a direct payment on the CARES Act, then the state received about 300 million, I believe, and so the state allocated that 300 million amongst the remaining counties and then the political subdivisions of those counties. So initially, there were four cities that were left out, Lawrence Beach Grove, Southport, and Speedway, because of the nature of how the CARES Act reimbursement occurred. I've been told that the second, Phase 2, if you will, of what Indianapolis received was dictated by the federal government, but anyway, yes, we will receive less than 1%. Could receive less than 1%. Yeah.
And I think, to support what Jason is saying, that is exactly my understanding as well, and unfortunately, I think Unigov is still unique across the country, and the concept of excluded cities for us is unique across the country, so I doubt anyone at the federal level ever considered the fact that this would be potentially, I'm going to call it, in my opinion, extremely unfair to Lawrence, because if you were not a Unigov city and you were simply looked at independently as part of another county in Indiana, or frankly, anywhere else in the country, you, I think, would have gotten a lot more money than that.
I'll say that the, perhaps, yeah, you are exactly right. I appeal to Governor Holcomb, his aide Andrew Forster, immediately after we learned about our 711,000 distribution, and it is federal money, and so neither Holcomb, Holcomb has no control over how it's distributed, and as you said, Chris, it's, the fact is, it's a federal, who the city is. I am meeting with Senator Mike Braun this Friday, and I'll express our deep concerns on the part of the other included cities along with Lawrence, and we'll see what it gives us. I don't have a great deal of hope right now. I do know that Jason and our, my admin staff are doing a great job of reporting all of our expenses for reimbursement to try to get that 711,000, that will do pretty easily, but at this point, I just have to hope that somebody at federal level will understand the unfairness of distribution.
With that, I'll move on to the timeline and the calendar for the 2021 budget. What you'll find is it's almost identical to what, for those of you who were on the council the last four years, the schedule's very similar, so our plan, at least internally, departments have submitted requests, we're reviewing those now, we'll meet with them next week to see where we are. Post that meeting, we'll get our budget documents together. We anticipate having the salary ordinances and the budget book itself to the council, or at least through Kathy Walton, on Friday, August 28, with an introduction on Tuesday, September 8, and at the council meeting, a day after Labor Day. I put a placeholder for a finance meeting on Wednesday, September 16. That's just a placeholder. I do think it's important to try to have a finance meeting that week, if we can, because the following week, on Wednesday, September 23, is when the publication of notice to taxpayers would need to go out, and if you recall, once that publication is out, budgets can't be increased, they can be decreased after that, but once that's out, and the reason for the publication is that also needs to be done at least 10 days prior to the public hearing, which, heading into October, that public hearing would be scheduled for Monday, October 5, which is the regularly scheduled council meeting in October, and then we would also plan for an adoption on Wednesday, October 21, which is the mid-month meeting, and that's similar to what we've done in prior years. And then the actual deadline to adopt is on Monday, November 2. So that's the 2021 budget calendar. If there are any questions on that. And the last thing on energy savings, and I know Chief Patalis is here, and I think he can give some more details on what's been done at fire stations, because a lot of the work that's been done has been at our fire stations, but I can tell you, in this building, windows have been replaced, the boiler, I believe, was beginning to be replaced today, both elevator shafts, new elevators will be put in over the next, I think, three to four months. We've had some HVAC and some other equipment at parks facilities replaced, but I know initially, when this started, it was primarily at the fire stations, and I don't want to speak for Chief Patalis, but I think he's been happy with some of the work that's been done to improve some of the general conditions of the firehouses.
Hello, everyone. I can give you a brief description, I'll answer any questions if you have them, but most of the firehouses, four of the five have had, three of the five have had new roofs, because we had a new roof put on 36s about two years ago, but one of the biggest changes we've seen is the windows, and it's made a huge improvement, because in the summertime, we were getting drafts, warm air blowing inside, and in the wintertime, the cold air. So just with the wind coming in from the outside, that in itself is probably going to be a huge energy savings for us, and it's cut out the wind noise, the windows are somewhat tinted, so it's blocking the sunlight from coming in. Most of the lighting has been done in the stations, and it's just overall, I think, probably the biggest thing right now, it's with the air conditioning being redone and the new lighting. I can't see how this won't save some money, but I think the biggest thing right now has been the windows, the huge improvement on that, that's, I think they're in better shape now than when these firehouses were built to be, to tell you the truth, so I'll, I can answer any questions, but one day, they did 25 windows in one firehouse, and I had to go there, because I thought, there is no way they can do 25 windows in one firehouse and have the work be at least good work, and we went out there, and they've done an awesome job with caulking on the inside and outside, and cleanup, and so they've done an extremely good job with these windows. But I can answer any questions that may have.
President Chavis?
Yes, Counselor.
Do you want me to give a one minute for the new counselors on what energy savings is, or would you rather save that for another day?
Let's say that I'm going to let Controller Fenwick and talk about the next phase of energy saving. So, Chris, give him a 30 seconds, give him 30 seconds.
Okay, I'll try to keep it for 30 seconds. You know, for lawyers, that's near impossible, because we like our words, but, so, energy savings is a specific statute within the Indiana Code that is about projects that can save money for cities and towns, public buildings, which include police and fire, that's why Chief Patalis was talking about, the things he was talking about, for public libraries, for K-12 schools can do these projects, it's limited to public buildings, and it's a specialized part of the law that basically says, if you can come up with an energy savings plan, and you can, all kinds of different things, it can include new roof, new windows, energy-efficient lighting, energy-efficient HVAC systems, things that tend to be aging anyway in government facilities, if you can create a plan that shows essentially that over no more than 20 years, the savings that the city gets from not having to pay higher energy bills, if that the city gets from not having to pay higher energy bills, if that savings pays for these improvements, then that's the kind of thing that is permitted. And you can also do other things that are not directly related to energy savings, that are building improvements as well, as long as those don't exceed a certain threshold of funding. So oftentimes, it makes a whole lot of sense to, while you're doing these other things, like replacing windows, replacing roofs, to do other things at the same time, because you have economies of scope and scale. So that's what we're talking about. Happy to answer more detailed questions either now or at another time. But I kind of wanted to frame that up for you.
Thank you. So the threshold is a good segue. So I'm going to have Controller Fenwick just give a very brief preview.
So that, kind of, other things, if you will, that can be done, the plan when this was approved back in, I believe, December, was there was going to be a Phase Two, which would also have included, with police moving out of this building, the plan was to consolidate some of our city operations into this building. That would have included moving the utility administration into this building. It is also going to include combining utility customer service and permitting for a one-stop-shop experience for the, you know, Lawrence customer. And in order to do that, a remodel of this building will need to take place. And that was part of what was going to be in the Phase Two, which I guess on that, I'll just leave it that there's more to come.
So that's, like I said, that's just a preview. The administration will be coming back to us in short order on when that is all worked out with perfection groups. So I just, I don't want you all to be blindsided about anything that you were not involved in. And since we have several new councilor members who weren't part of the energy savings initiative, I just wanted you to know what to prepare for. So if you want to do your homework between now and then to understand what the energy savings initiative was about, and if you have questions, when he comes to bring us sort of that Phase Two, you'll be better prepared.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Council Giles?
Would it be appropriate for us to have an energy savings committee meeting sometime in the near future?
Absolutely.
Okay. I would like to get with, 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 with Controller Fenwick, I guess, and the administration to get that figured out. And we'll get the folks in from, from our contractor also, and, and we can get, you know, keep people up to speed with that, I guess.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. There is none. New business, consideration of council appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals. We did have a member of that board have to resign as a result of relocating outside of the city of Lawrence. So we will be nominating and appointing someone new this evening. So I am going to open up the floor for nominations.
Madam President, I would like to nominate Paula Strauss.
What's her first name?
Paula Strauss.
Madam President, I have one question, please. I understand that the BZA has an alternate on that body. I assumed, probably wrongly, that that person moves into that position. Is that correct? Is it a whole new appointment?
Yeah, so each one of those appointments, we always have an alternate. The alternate is nominated and voted on. That is an actual board position. And then, you know, who attends the meetings when they're available and who stands in if needed. So, yes, that alternate doesn't move. We actually nominate and vote for each member.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam President, I'd like to nominate Eugene West.
Eugene West has been nominated?
Yes.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, nominations are now closed. Okay, we're going to need to do a roll call vote. So we have Paula Strauss and Eugene West. Counselor Freeman?
Paula Strauss.
Counselor Whitfield? That's correct. Counselor Russell?
Eugene West.
Counselor Denny?
Eugene West.
Counselor Giles?
Eugene West.
Counselor Shavlat?
Eugene West.
Counselor Wells? He's not here anymore. Counselor Rusamoroff. It seems as though her audio and video are off, but I still see her name there. There you go. It's just coming in and out.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
Asking for me?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Mr. West, please.
Okay. Counselor Chavis, Eugene West. 7-1. Congratulations, Mr. West. You are now our appointment for the Board of Zoning Appeals. And Counselor Denny, if you can, please forward Mr. West's address to our clerk right away.
Absolutely. I'll text her now.
I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have comments of the administration. You need to unmute Mayor.
All right, remember. I'll get the, I miss this about over. Few comments. On Monday, July 7th, we enjoyed a presentation by HR Director Jeanette Jackson and Carl Drummer with I on the workplace. As we continue to try to make my administrative team, please, look like Lawrence, Jeanette is compiling a data source, a database of sources to draw from whenever the city has an open position. Carl Drummer spoke to our desire of the city to hold true to seeking out representation among WBE, MBE, and WMVVE contractors. We tried very hard in our police station. We have projects that we think will be done in the next couple of years. So it will be important for us to be able to be very diligent in seeking that. I'm not sure whether any of you had a chance to see, but our new street sleeper was out this past week. It's been newly wrapped. It's pretty cool looking. It looks just like the Lawrence, the city of Lawrence flag. This past week, with myself and Scott Fadness, to speak about what we're doing in our communities to encourage adversity and to gain a greater understanding of each of our cultures and our personal experiences. Scott and I, as many of you know, have worked very closely. And as the southern part of Hamilton County begins to look more and more like the city of Lawrence, it's good for he and I both to begin to work toward those same goals. On Thursday, August 6th, this week, we have kickoff meeting to begin the much anticipated Free G project. And some of you, if you're like me, are finally saying finally. Free G manufacturing will soon break ground on an $8 million facility and will employ approximately 150 workers at $3 an hour or $60,000 a year. Last week, we began to work on our decorative crosswalks with the first one to be today. I'm going to hold that up. Can any, can you guys see that, Spike? That's on Wheeler Avenue. And Jason's there, too. I think we have five of those scheduled to go in there. It's kind of a great way to welcome to Lawrence. Last week, relocation of the historic communications building began. If you haven't stopped by and if you want to, they are going to be moving that building tomorrow. It'll take them the entire day, moving it about less than half a mile. It weighs 360 tons. They have something like 40 different dollies on that. I've got dollies that are moving into place behind the Stere Center. As many of you already know, unfortunately, we've not been able to adequately arrest this for COVID-19, resulting in the governor's decision to keep Indiana in Phase 4.5. We had a rather lengthy meeting among the first responders and healthcare workers, celebration that we had planned in that committee. And pretty much unanimously, we decided that out of an abundance of caution, we should postpone that celebration. We are hoping, with fingers crossed, to do something very similar to what we had planned sometime around the middle of October. You'll know well ahead of time when that, when we're able to do that. Just have to pray, keep our fingers crossed, so we can get this COVID-19 under control. That's all I have. Please.
Thank you, Mayor. I also did want to add, I skipped my mind earlier, but Mayor Collier, Controller Fenwick, and myself, we did participate in the State Board of Accounts interest conferences warning. And so that audit will kick off, and it is targeted to be completed by September We are adjourned.